Board to order. It's 7:06 on Monday, July 14th. We're in the administration building at 12121 West North Avenue, lower level. And we will begin with a moment of silent reflection, please. Mrs. Galanti?
Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Excused.
Mr. Kroner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thank you. At this time, we will take comment on, public comment on non-agenda items. Anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Members of the Wauwautosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. We'll proceed to our first presentation. We have a special guest tonight. We're very proud and happy to welcome Tyler Erickson. He's a 2014 graduate from Wauwautosa West High School. And Mr. Bodden and I and Dr. Erdl had the privilege of seeing him greet his classmates at the ceremony with a really wonderful introduction. So Tyler's going to share that with us here tonight and tell us a little bit about himself. Yes?
This is Taylor.
Pardon me?
This is Taylor.
What did I say? Tyler?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I really, I apologize.
Don't let her off so easy.
Okay, you're reading. It's written here, Tyler. Yeah, I truly apologize.
No problem.
Thank you.
Am I supposed to talk about myself first?
Yeah, tell us a little bit about yourself and what's next and anything else you'd like to share.
Man, well, I don't really, just, I just graduated and I'm going to UWM in the fall. I'm a student supervisor right now at Whitman. And I like to rap, so.
All right.
But yeah, let me do this speech. Graduation, congratulations. Let me open for a moment my imagination. It's fascinating. Spending years, blood, sweat, and tears, and now we walking out the doors and say a salutation to a whole new future in a blank page canvas. You can go and write the average main state standards, or you can aim high and dream big. It ain't time to sit around saying why I ain't try, I can't lie, this is graduation. Me, I'm glad I made it. B student tweaking in the classroom space and in my math class trying to make an application, but I don't even know what we was doing in that class. I just kind of like drew pictures in my notebook and waited for the bell to ring. But anyway, I sprang out of bed, a song sang in my head. It's been a strenuous arrival, but we came out ahead. So whether you go to college, soak up knowledge, go to work to hold the dollars, marathon mentality, you solely gotta go for progress. Graduation, now the task we facing is to fire off the block speed and blast and racing to make moves, make a difference, and make a career and sign the earth so future generations know we were here today. Classes in session, no asking these questions, passing my test, and crowded against to what happened in essence, massive blessings, laughing to send a clap, send attention right after it ended, laughing to mention we have to ascend, passing a message. Give the good you got back in good measure. Go and make a way and you can make the world better. Make the good decisions, don't waste what you were given. Take upon yourself the kind of life worthy of living. Yes, graduation, congratulations. Don't scratch the record books, make lacerations. Y'all, we made it here and we got plenty more dreams, so here's looking at you, class of 2014.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It was even better the second time. And thank you for coming back and probably having to re-rehearse. But we decided, Mr. Bodden, that more people had to hear that. So, thank you again. Okay, we will move on then to approval of our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve. A second.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
I have a board.
I'm sorry, I'm, board comment, Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. There's one item I'd like to speak about, and it's an item that I support. The district is going to purchase or proposing to purchase 1,300 Chromebooks for $359,000. And I support this proposal, but the reason I'm speaking about it is I was a little surprised to see it on the consent agenda.
Mr. Kroner, I'm going to ask you to not focus on process, but if you want to speak about the bid, please do that.
I'd like to speak about the motion, and this is included in the motion.
Okay. And do you have questions?
I'd like to state my reasons for why I support this proposal. May I do that?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
This is an important proposal because we're purchasing electronic textbooks, online textbooks for the new social studies curriculum for, I think, sixth, seventh, ninth, and 10th grades. I might not have the grades exactly right. And it was determined that we need these Chromebooks to help students learn this material online. The reason that I was surprised to see this on the consent agenda is that we had not had a public discussion about it. Now, I thought this might sneak through without the public really understanding what the district was proposing to do.
Mr. Kroner? I'm sorry, you're talking process again? And there has been public discussion on it? So you said you wanted to talk about why you, why you support it. Please go ahead.
I see I'm being cut off here, but the fact is, this, this material has not been as a open agenda item before, and I think it, these kind of things should be so the public is aware of what's going on. Again, I'm supporting the material, but I think in terms of open government, we just need to have these things out in the open so they're explained fully to the public.
Any other comments? Mr. Meyer?
I guess I take exception to the characterization of sneaking through. It's publicly posted in black and white, like everything else. Opportunity for public comment. There's no sneaking anything through, so I don't understand that characterization. Doesn't matter if it's on the agenda called out or on the consent agenda. It's here in the agenda for everyone to read. So it is rather open. So that's my comment.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Is there any public comment at this time on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Galanti, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, last one, please. Okay, we will move on then to our action items, beginning with human resources. Mr. Kroner, please.
Thank you. It is recommended that the school board approve the administrative contract of Willie E. Garrison II as East High School Associate Principal effective July 1, 2014, for 221 days per year at a salary of $80,000, an ISO move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Dr. Erdl, did you want to introduce Mr. Heinz?
I'm going to introduce Mr. Hughes and allow him to introduce Mr. Garrison.
Okay.
We're thrilled to have Mr. Garrison join us in our district, and Mr. Hughes is going to share a little bit. And Mr. Garrison has a 15-minute monologue he's ready to go through. It's what we told him, anyway.
Yeah.
He is feeling a lot of pressure after Taylor's presentation, by the way, so, which was phenomenal. I'm not sure if he's still here. It is my pleasure to welcome Mr. Garrison, Willie Garrison II, to Wauwautosa School District and East High School. We have gone through an elaborate process of hiring. Mr. Garrison comes to us from Milwaukee Hamilton, where he has served as a teacher, a dean of students, and as associate principal. I think persistence would be a best way to describe Mr. Garrison's approach to East High School. He has applied to the district previously. We have interviewed him, we have not interviewed him, and now we have finally hired him. So I think it's a testament to his persistence and his desire to be here in Wauwautosa. So it's my pleasure to welcome Willie Garrison. He'll introduce his wife as well.
Thank you.
At first, I thought all these people was here because of me. Guess I was completely wrong. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Wauwautosa School community for allowing me this opportunity to serve your community. Principal Hughes, of course, Dr. Superintendent Erdl, again, thank you for this opportunity. I do have my lovely wife with here, with me here, Dr. Camille Garrison, who actually works with Milwaukee Columbia St. Mary's. I do have three lovely kids at home right now. They were going to come out, but that's the privilege of having a teenager. I have a 13-year-old, and an eight-year-old, and a three-year-old, who's my daughter and the second mom in the house. She pretty much lets me know that she wakes up every morning and comes in and says, "Here comes me." So, that's my, that's my daughter. So again, thank you to the school board, of course, to Wauwautosa School community for allowing me this opportunity to serve your great district. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. And wait till your 13-year-old finds out what he missed. Okay, Board members? Comments, questions? Okay. Any community comment on this action item? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Galanti?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. And we will then move on to reports. Superintendent, Dr. Erdl's going to speak first regarding the school perceptions survey results.
Thank you. Bill Foster's here this evening to share the results. Bill is from school perceptions. We worked with school perceptions, I believe it was eight or nine years ago, and did a community survey right prior to the undertaking of the first long-range plan, and really looked at having them come back and now trying to do it on a more consistent basis, on every other year basis. So this is kind of a baseline year, and then we'll continue down the path. But Mr. Foster's here to share the results of the survey.
Great, well, thanks for having me again. I think, I think Dr. Erdl was just being hired when I was here last time, so it's been a while. Glad to be back. So what I'm going to go through tonight is, is really just a kind of an executive summary of the data. We tried to present it in a way that was fairly succinct, and as Dr. Erdl said, the goal was really to establish a planning baseline, as well as establish really school-level improvement plans. So most of the data we gathered was really around individual schools, but there were a few district-level questions that we're going to go over tonight as well. So the surveys were conducted in April and early May 2014. It was a parent survey. It was primarily emailed out, but we made it available to parents who did not have access to email or the internet via paper survey. We had 1,282 respondents, which is a margin of error for the total sample of about plus or minus 2.8 percent. We asked the question, "Are you a resident?" So we had 86 percent resident, 14 percent were non-resident, which I imagine are open enrollment in to the district. That's how you would show up, that's 14 percent. We asked how long they live in the district. Looks like when you come to, come to Tosa, you stay in Tosa, so almost half the respondents have been here more than 10 years. 75 percent of the respondents, either themselves or the spouse, had volunteered in the district, which is really quite high. We ask this question quite often, and that's just about the highest they've seen. We asked one question, and it is probably where we do a lot of the community surveys for the sake of referendum preparation. This was not that sort of survey, but we did want to ask, ask a guidance question as it relates to facility planning. And kind of the essence of it was, should we kind of continue to fix up what we have, remodel existing schools, or should we explore building a new school? And here we actually really can kind of combine the first to continue with current policy of maintaining, repairing, remodel existing schools. Those are kind of the same things. So arguably over half the respondents said yes to that, with 4 percent said build new in the same location, or 2 percent said explore building new schools. I think the message here is that parents like their neighborhood schools, and they want to maintain their neighborhood schools. We asked a couple of communication questions at the district level. I use the following communication tools. So 94 percent were email, 88 percent internet-connected computers, and we're actually up to 14 percent of our parents tweeting now. It's interesting, when you ask the students if they're tweeting, that's actually about 40 percent. So about 25 percent of the students are actually using Facebook regularly. So it's kind of shifting, but anyway, this is what our parents are doing. Another question we asked as it relates to communication was, "I rely on the following sources for school and district information." And again, you can see email kind of won at 84 percent. The school and district websites have a high readership of 81 percent. And then we go down, all the way down through the friends and neighbors and daily announcements and blackboard phone at 28. And we've got school board meetings, especially on a nice night in July, at 5 percent, and cable access at 2 percent. Best way to communicate with you and/or your family, again, blackboard, email, it's clearly the desired mode of communication. And we're down to 21 percent with website postings and printed newsletters and flyers. So there was one section that dealt with district-level feedback. And we asked, "When you visit your child's school," first one was, "Do you feel comfortable in acting with parents of cultural and ethnic backgrounds different than yours?" 95 percent said yes. "Are teachers easy to talk to?" 94 percent said yes. And is the staff, reception staff friendly and helpful? 92 percent said yes. Those are very good numbers. Those were unique questions. We have not asked, or not enough to create a, what we call a similar school comparison. These are really for the sake of creating a baseline, so in a couple of years, we can say, if we launch an initiative to try to improve one of those, did we in fact move the needles? That's the reason those questions are there. And again, a district-level feedback, sorts of questions, district attracts some high-quality teachers. And we have three columns. The first one is a percent who either agreed or strongly, or either strongly agreed and agreed. That's a pretty easy number for everybody, even if you're not a survey person, that kind of get. The next number is a little bit more, maybe a little less easy to understand. And this is a simple average that's calculated based on the weighting. Strong agree was five, agree was four, disagree was two, strongly disagree was one. That's the way we've had our, kind of, asked questions for over a dozen years against that scale. We calculate a simple average based on that, and you can see the average. So if it's four, if it was 4.0, or let's say it's 5.0, that means everybody who responded to that particular statement said strongly agree. And if it was one, everybody who responded said it was strongly disagree. So you can see the averages. And then where it applies, or where we had information, we did a variance from similar school average. Green is good, red is bad, and you can see 0.03, 0.02, you're just slightly under. And the board many times will ask, "Well, what's significant?" And the answer is about 0.2. So if it's at 0.2, 0.20 or greater, that tends to be a significant positive or negative variance. So here, you're, you're basically right on with your, your comparison group. So then we asked, in fact, the way the survey worked, it was a branching survey, so if you had a child in more than one school, you got to answer these questions more than one time, but you didn't have to take multiple surveys, you just had multiple sections. So what we did for the sake of this presentation tonight was just group all elementaries. Otherwise, I'd be here for about three hours, because I think we had over 540 statements we tested. So we kind of grouped the elementaries and then the post-secondary, or the middle school and high school together. So here, you can kind of run down the list from the first one, "I am satisfied with communications that comes from our school." 91 percent either agreed or strongly agree with an average of 4.23. And you can see, green is good. You're really above your comparison group for every item, actually, at the elementary level. So you're doing, the takeaway here is you're doing great. Everything we tested from schools are clean and well-kept. We test questions around bullying, safety, positive relationship with at least one adult at school, technologies used effectively. We've got Chromebooks coming, I understand. Teacher, teacher conferences, provide productive communication. These are all positive, very positive. And then you can see here, we actually get into some that I would call really significantly better than your peer group. "I feel welcomed at my child's school. I receive enough information to understand my child's progress, 0.3 higher. My child is being adequately prepared for the next grade level or post-secondary pursuit, and there are sufficient opportunities for me to be involved in my child's school," which kind of correlates to that 75 percent we saw that are volunteering. The next items, these are more for baselining. We wanted to put these in. They all tested actually, actually quite high, so we don't have a similar school comparison, but in two years from now, we will have a longitudinal cut at this. And the same with the third set of items. Again, you can see, they all tested fairly high. We get down to, "I'm welcome to actively participate in the school, school communities like PTA, PTO are 87, very strong. Feel comfortable sharing ideas for school improvement at 84. I feel my opinions are taken into consideration when it comes to school policy decisions." Now we're dropping down, but I don't have a comparison here to say that that's lower or anything. What tested the lowest in Wauwautosa was the food. This is not uncommon. I understand you've been working on this. And food is one of those things, by the way, that you'll, you'll never make everybody happy. I guess that's why we have all different kinds of restaurants. But it's, it's a challenge, and you were at 61 percent either agreed or strongly agreed on the statement, "I am satisfied with food options provided at lunch," with an average of 3.27. Then we get to the middle and high school, in kind of the same format. We were grouped the strongly agrees and agrees, calculated an average and then a variance. And here, we had a couple, in fact, really the only one that was significantly under your similar school average was the, "My child feels safe at school." And I understand that there was, was some bomb threats that were occurring? So surveying is one of those things, it's a snapshot in time, and you're not surveying against what happened last fall, you're surveying kind of in, in terms of what happened recently in people's memory. If that just happened, that will affect people's responses, and that might be the reason why you scored a bit lower than your peer group when it comes to my child feeling, feeling safe. And I would create the distinction, that's physical safety as opposed to emotional or social safety, which when we test bullying, you'll see that we're actually doing better in those areas. So, satisfied with communications from, comes from the school. We actually look at the, I think we'll quick go through the other slides we put together for the board packet. We can look at where there's, it's, it's not as good with some particular schools. And again, the goal of this was really school improvement planning, not necessarily board-level School facilities are clean and well-kept, a little bit lower. Child enjoys going to school, a little bit lower, and, you know, these are not significant. Second slice at the middle and high school grouped together, opportunities for me to be involved in my child's school, 0.06, better. Technologies used effectively, 0.08. Excuse me. The two that we have, as I mentioned, the, "I am satisfied with our school's efforts to prevent bullying." It's really a, that's a very, very difficult issue, and you can see you're significantly above your peer group for that item, as well as, "My child is being adequately prepared for the next grade level or post-secondary pursuit," 0.24. So we're doing quite well there. I'll let y'all read that. And then the last section, "I'd recommend, recommend my child's school to a friend," at 86 percent. Comfortable contact with principal, 85. Rules and standard conduct are enforced, 78 percent. And food actually tested just a bit better, 68 percent at the middle and high school, and feel my opinions are taken into consideration when it comes to school policy. Here, we're at 60 percent of the middle and high school parents. We did do, we gathered a lot of comments, and there's actually another document called our comment theme summary. So what we do is we read all the comments, we kind of say, "What are the prevailing themes?" And these are the prevailing themes, and there is a document that doesn't, isn't all the comments, but it's the prevailing themes, and we cut and paste verbatim some of the comments. So what came out of that at a high level was respondents shared comments regarding the importance of hiring, retaining quality staff. Respondents expressed concern with the lunch program, we talked about that. Generally speaking, the respondents are happy with the amount and type of communication, but offered suggestions for improvement. Those are really school-specific suggestions, and those will be shared with the individual schools. Kind of similar to the first theme was the fourth theme, which was respondents mentioning the importance of paying teachers a salary that is competitive with neighborhood or neighboring districts. Respondents shared comments regarding the importance of integrating technology in the learning experience, and there were many positive comments regarding the district. Questions on the report?
Thank you very much. Board members? Mr. Bodden?
How does the sample compare to when you first took it? As far as the numbers?
Oh, that's a good question. I think it was a bit better, but I, I think we looked back in March or something, but I don't remember. Dr. Erdl, do you remember what it was?
I, I know the percentage of respondents was higher.
This time?
This time. And, I mean, the results, I, I don't know, I'd be, they were similar. But I think these are more specific, and we're able to break it down by school and use it more so. The last one was a different purpose, it was for district planning. This one is really to use at the building levels, so I think it'll be much more useful that way. What percentage response do we get?
I think we're at about 26, 27 percent.
We were under 20 the first time.
Yeah. There's another, just, this might make sense, the, if people ever be in their bond about something, they tend to take the survey. So if you have issues, your response rate will go up. And so I think what you're seeing is you really have very, generally speaking, across the board, very positive feedback, and that might be, that correlates with a, not really as low, but a lower response rate, but still better than last time. And from a statistical standpoint, very, very solid.
The question comes to my mind, if we have 26 percent responding to something, that is that enough or significant enough to influence what goes on in a building?
Yes. Yeah, it really does. There's enough data there, there's enough, it's really a combination of the, the quantitative to kind of give you some things to look into, and then sometimes you use the comments to drill a bit deeper and say, "Well, what, what's really going on there?" And then, you know, sometimes we didn't ask the perfect quantitative question, but you can make sense of it. So I think, you know, people that had concerns were able to express them, and I think the individual schools will be able to capture that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Casey?
Do you know if hand did more elementary or high school parents take the survey? Is there, are there numbers on that?
As far as absolute numbers, I don't know, and the other challenge is, I can have a child in, you know, elementary, middle, and high, so which one do you count that for? Generally speaking, the elementary turnout would be a little bit higher than the middle and high school.
I would think so. I just want to comment as a board member, that, that one where we were in the red with a two-point on child safety. If we needed to, could we have the middle school data extrapolated from the high school data?
It is.
It is.
Yeah, it is. And in fact, I think it's even in your board packet where we broke it out by, by individual school.
All right. I didn't, I didn't notice that, but I'm quite certain that that was, like you said, in response to some of what was going on. And I, as a board member, am, am quite certain that the, the district will, you know, maintain that and look at that and handle that with the swiftness and responsibility and care that they did with, with the bomb threats this year. But that's something that, you know, we'll, I think we'll keep an eye on, because it doesn't sit well with us. And, I don't know, overall, I, I think there's a couple of things we need to look at as, as a district, but I'm, I'm pretty satisfied and appreciative of the parents who took the time to, to share their comments with us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just have one quick question. The email, was that just sent out once, and then they had a end date and time?
But if you didn't take it, we send out a reminder, a friendly reminder. And then if you don't still take it, we send you a last chance.
Okay.
So if you took it, you only got one email.
Thank you. And then that question for Dr. Erdl, could you just briefly be a little more specific as to how you will use this?
Each year, the buildings put together goals for the year and try to get as much information. A lot of it's academic information, and we're, we've been limited on this type of information, perception data. So this gives us another tool that they can use, and some of it real specific by building. Some buildings are, I think, kind of stand out in certain areas that I know I'm going to look at and make sure it's being addressed. And certainly make sure that it can be explained. But it's really, to me, I look at it and say, let's try to address it. And then let's see, at least we have a way to measure whether or not we're getting the approval that we're trying to. And we put a goal, we put some actions in place.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Fuster, it sounds like in your experience in doing these, that we measure up very well?
Quite well.
Quite well.
And your comparison group are very good schools, so you're, you're really doing well.
Okay. That's really good to know. We appreciate that. Thank you for the presentation. Is there any community comment on this presentation? Seeing none, we can move on then to the Montessori school updated, please.
Bill Anderson is going to share. I think he's got a few friends with him this evening as well.
Yeah, I did.
But there's kind of an update, but also looking at a recommendation that we're going to be bringing forward to the board related to seventh and eighth grade program for the Montessori. We added sixth grade a year, two years ago. And I think we know we started the school at this, in this level in this area, a number of years ago. It's been very successful, and I would assume the parents that are here can attest to the success of the program. We have some data to back up the success of the program. And we're looking to find a way to expand it into seventh and eighth grade as well, if we have an opportunity. So Mr. Anderson is going to share some information on that.
If you can find it. I'll find it. Here we go. Thank you for coming with me. All right, well, welcome. And thank you for this opportunity to be with you, to share you a little bit, share with you a little bit about Montessori, where we've come from and the growth that we've seen, and then kind of give you a picture of the future. So that's kind of the view. Thank you to all the parents that are here and support. I appreciate that, and our faculty. So I know that the home run derby for the All-Star game is going on, so I'm going to try to make this concise and get us through. So if there's baseball fans here, I'll try to get through this. So I am a supervisor of special programming. One of my roles is to lead the Montessori school. And it's been a fascinating journey over the last two years, and a lot of fun, a lot of fun for me, a lot of fun for the kids, and a lot of fun for the parents. So I hope that this presentation both shows you a little bit of the growth we've had and success where we're at, and then kind of paint a picture for that future for us. So we opened in 2011. We had 63 students, three teachers, some part-time assistants. And our children's house, our lower elementary and upper elementary, we had a multi-purpose room, one section of the lower, the children's and upper. And we did not have a service kitchen. So we were doing art in a class, or art in the hallway. But we were a school. The boardroom was just finished, and three days before school opened, the classrooms actually opened. So it was kind of an exciting time and nerve-wracking at the same time. Last year, I took over in 2012, 13. We had a population of 87 students, three and a half teachers, two sections of our children's house. We had one section of our lower elementary, one section of upper elementary. We added at that point a extra art room. We had kitchen services with Sedexo. We had a brand-new gym facility, and we turned a closet into a main office. And so we were well on our way to being a school. So it's been a kind of a fun ride. As opposed to last year, last year our population climbed to 113 students, four and a half teachers. We had two sections of lower, two sections of children, one section of our upper elementary. And again, we were occupying five classrooms with our multi-purpose room. We had our art room, and we split our children's house into two separate sections in November, late October, early November, as our new classroom came online. And we added a lower elementary section last year with our Ms. Abigail, new teacher. This coming year, we project to be around 130 students, about five and a half teachers, two sections of the children, two sections of lower, two sections of upper, occupying six classrooms, multi-purpose room. Again, we have an art room, which is nice. Again, we use that also for some recreation department programming. And then this year is our addition of our second, a second upper elementary section. So in terms of our continued success and our student achievement, WSAS results has shown, we're well above the state average and right up there with our district top-performing schools in both reading and math. In terms of school report card, which came out last year, first year, we were rated as significantly exceeding expectations. And our math scores in both reading and math continue to demonstrate growth within our students compared to our district's students in the same category. So here are some of the brief highlights. I could probably talk for hours about these. But in the last two years, we've had many different opportunities and activities that we've created in the Montessori school to help build our culture, from raised planting beds to nature's classroom journey, to holiday concerts, our ambassador outreach, Cub Scouts, and so on and so forth. This year coming up, we're partnering with Wauwautosa Daycare to have extended learning activities here in the school, which has been a big push by not only our parents in our community, but also with us. And so we're also partnering with the Wauwautosa Department to offer what about Wednesdays or all about Wednesdays for the first time this coming year. So where are we going from here? That kind of painted a really quick picture of where we are. So in the fall of 2012, when I began, there was a few parents that were inquiring, well, what about the pathway moving on to seventh and eighth grade? I kind of said, well, let me get my first year under my belt, and let's have that conversation along the way. So last year in fall, some more discussions transpired talking with Dr. Erdl. We ended up beginning to have a parent group forum, and we invited Matt Ray and Julie Buck Oldson for a, from Fernwood, who developed their adolescent program. And we began a parent forum and said at that point, after the meeting, we need to get parents on board, get a committee, start doing some research, see what's going on within our community in the greater Milwaukee area in terms of adolescent programs. And so we began doing our kind of background and research. We identified our parents through surveys, and about half our families in surveying our parents, would you want to keep your child enrolled in Montessori school through eighth grade if there were alternative experience here? We had about 36 families and five families saying strongly agree or strongly, strongly agree or agree within that survey. And again, that was about 50% of our families and responded in that survey. In March, some of our families did on our phone survey, where they currently talked with our upper elementary students and families, and asked if you were to stay in seventh and eighth grade program, if we had it here, would you stay? About 13 families out of 19 responded and said absolutely yes, about 80%. Again, there was a student that's going to be moving on to homeschooling and a couple of other families that moved out of the area in that upper elementary. So the need currently to, for our current sixth grade families who are leaving, we do have, again, two families that are leaving our district in seventh grade. One to pursue Montessori Middle School and another pursue, again, more project-based, some home learning experiences. We want to provide a Montessori pathway for our students here in Wauwautosa through eighth grade. And again, losing revenue is critical to long-term success for our community. And so we want to continue to look at the possibilities down the road for expanding and continuing our program through eighth grade. So what is our proposal? Our proposal is to create a adolescent program, a seventh and eighth grade program here in the Wauwautosa School District that continues our programming through eighth grade in Montessori. We want to build upon the success of our middle school offerings such as M-STEM, creating that M-STEM pathway. We want to continue that pathway through eighth grade so that we continue and capture and retain our parents here in Wauwautosa and our students. We want to look at implementing in the 15, 16 school year. So we'll look at a little bit of a vision to that. So what does that program look like? It's really built around some tenants. These tenants are multi-age classrooms, grace and courtesy, hands-on, theme-based learning, individual and group work, self-construcative learning, and also environmental education in taking what they're learning and applying it to the outside world, service learning and economic independence. These are all tenants of current Montessori practices in our lower elementary, in our upper elementary, and also in our children's house. And so to give you a flavor of some of these practices in practice, I'm going to show a quick eight-minute video that's going to, if I can get there, that's going to, again, reflect those tenants of some high-performing programs in the country.
Early adolescence is a time of tremendous change and challenge. From the ages of 12 to 15, students face emotional, physical, social, and intellectual changes. They are growing faster than at any other time of life other than infancy. They are learning to make the transition from childhood to adulthood. What happens during these years can shape a lifetime. Educational research supports the need for middle schools that address the unique needs of the early adolescent. Montessori middle schools have been adapting the Montessori philosophy to the needs of early adolescents for over 25 years. In this program, we will be visiting two of the oldest and most respected Montessori middle schools in the country. School of the Woods, a private Montessori school in Houston, Texas, and Clark Montessori Junior High School, a public school in Cincinnati, Ohio. Central to the Montessori middle school philosophy are multi-aged learning communities, grace and courtesy, hands-on, theme-based learning, individual and group work, self-construction, environmental education, service learning, and economic independence. Maria Montessori believes that children have a natural desire to learn and that they thrive in an environment that facilitates that learning. The Montessori Middle School, like all Montessori schools, is a multi-aged learning community. The older children serve as role models for the younger students, helping everyone to understand the expectations of the classroom.
I'd like to acknowledge my partner, Jamara, because I wasn't here yesterday for a community meeting. And she came up to me at the beginning of the day, and I took the initiative to get our papers.
The multi-age classroom is more like a family than a peer group, enabling students to form bonds with classmates of all ages.
I was incredibly nervous just because I didn't know anybody. Like, there was no one from my old class at my elementary school. But the eighth graders, they made it easy. They kind of like, my first friend, I think, was actually an eighth grader named Emily. And she was just real nice. She was in my group, and she just didn't look down on me like I was just like, you know, you're a little seventh grader. But she was just really nice, and we became really good friends, and we still are.
Each day at the School of the Woods begins with a morning meeting. Part of the meeting is set aside for acknowledgements.
I would like to acknowledge all the teachers for making a great cycle one.
I'd like to acknowledge my small group for yesterday. We did really awesome.
Acknowledgements help to establish an atmosphere of trust where students feel safe to be themselves. They quickly learn that those who acknowledge their classmates are often recognize themselves for their contributions to the school community.
I move that we can use the stove slash oven.
Today, there is also a suggestion to change the procedure on access to the classroom's oven. A proposal is made and discussed. The students themselves handle the entire democratic process. Once all the pros and cons have been laid out, the students who made the proposal convene to restate it to meet the consensus of the group.
More than one person can use it at a time. And it also means that if eight people need to boil water, you can get a pot and boil water, and all those people can share the water.
The proposal passes by a wide margin. Using this democratic process helps middle school students understand how the larger society functions in a meaningful way. They learn to discuss issues respectfully and resolve them constructively. Montessori philosophy emphasizes that all members of the classroom community treat others with kindness and respect. At Clark, all seventh graders attend a fall leadership camp to help students learn to take responsibility and work together to achieve a common goal. In this meeting, the students are acknowledging their classmates who took leadership in a project that challenged them to work together.
About fourth or fifth. Cool. And so then, we was at the one, we had to borrow through the little string. And after we got through that, everybody was just in the arguing. Colleen was like, you know what? Come on. And everybody followed Colleen instead of just standing there and getting the penalty. Colleen, everybody ran up to Colleen, and then that's once we started, that's when we started cooperating and everything.
You heard that Justin and I were talking about you behind the back. I think that that was really...
Learning leadership skills help to build the school community. When conflicts arise, there are ways for students to resolve conflict without adult intervention. At Clark, a conflict resolution wheel is used to sort out issues and feelings.
I want you guys to apologize to me and not talk about it no more.
The goal is to restore the sense of community within a classroom.
I want us to be friends again, to have a strong community. And to do this, when I hear people talking about other people, I'd love to step in and be a member.
Diffusion, diffusion, okay.
Academic content is taught through theme-based research projects and small group work. Like all Montessori schools, an emphasis is on hands-on learning.
Cell membrane is the wall around the cell. It's permeable, just like a real factory in which there's cargo bay and doors for workers to come through.
Vacuole. Vacuole is like a storage unit. It stores things that are not being used in the factory.
Understanding cell structure is part of the middle school science curriculum. Students were challenged to come up with a metaphor that explains how the cell parts function. These students use the example of a factory to explain the function of each cell part. Using a metaphor as a theme for this hands-on project helps students retain knowledge.
The journals are like the trading department.
When you did your experiment, what variable affected the experiment the most?
The length of the string.
And what happened with that?
The shorter the string was, the more frequency it had, and then the longer ones had less frequency.
At Clark, the theme of motion provided the focus for the third cycle of the school year, including the physics of motion, motion on an atomic level and chemistry, and the movement of ideas as seen through the study of art. For the art curriculum, students went to the Cincinnati Art Museum to conduct research on Renaissance art, which they later used to compose scripts for podcasts. The podcasts covered the particular aspects of the art they were studying. Later, the students returned to the museum to follow their classmates' podcast tours, broadening their knowledge of the museum's collection of artifacts and studying the movement of the idea of beauty, art, and subject over time. The third cycle culminated with a visit from professional trapeze artists who gave the students hands-on experience of the physics of motion. Theme-based learning provides a structure around which to organize knowledge, increase retention, and to see relationships... retention, and to see relationships through subjects.
So that gives you a flavor of kind of the eight tenants that we're looking at to build our program. And so, you know, the hard part is whenever you're starting a program, you're investing. So if we were to look at our current population, these are our current students, and the blue is our current population for the last three years. If you were to extend only our students, and our population of students into a seventh and eighth grade, eventually our population would top out at about 173 students. If we extrapolate that out and open up seats at about 25 for, 25 seats for seventh grade and eventually 25 seat for an eighth grade, about 50 students per section, you would see that we'd top out somewhere around a population of 200 students. So our extended vision is to have a seventh and eighth grade of 45 to 50 students in that classroom, two teachers, one hopefully with an ELA, social studies type background, one with a math-science background. From the, some of the programs we looked at, that was kind of a combination that we've seen in, particularly in Fernwood, and they said that worked out really well in terms of having that combination. We would still continue with our morning curriculum work cycle. That's important to the Montessori. One of the things that we'd look at is going outs where students in small groups are going out into the community to continue research and look at their interests and begin to, again, research their interest in not only arts and science, but also in careers. And then a component of environmental education, meaning that there would be a point where, again, we look at our, the outside, we have garden beds that are going. So that's something we want to continue to expand on, taking what we learn and then in the, in books and in the classroom and bring that out to the classroom outside. And then finally, business as a school, that economic independence is very important in Montessori because part of it is to build those business-minded understandings as a school and as a community and that teamwork as you work through that process. That's very important in terms of building that, that culture within your community. So again, and again, around those eight tenants we talked about. So what financial support do we need starting next year? Well, I looked at one FTE teacher, about $80,000, or special teachers, about $38,000. Terms of material costs of assets for the classroom, estimate about $15,000. Technology costs, about $5,000. Curriculum costs, $10,000. Training costs for Montessori, if we couldn't find somebody that had Montessori training, the training itself is over the period of summer, six weeks in Ohio, that's $12,000. Classroom modifications, minimal, at about $1,000. So we estimate approximately 6,300 per student at 25 students in seventh grade in the next year. So in 15, 16. That following year, again, the costs are approximately 5,800 per student, and again, So again, as I said, it is an investment in the future. It is, as we started out our school in Montessori, it was a big investment. So what space would we necessarily use here in Montessori? Well, lucky 13. This room here is a, a school board room. We use it from dawn to time already here in Montessori, and it is utilized. Our proposal would be that we take this over as our seventh and eighth grade classroom. And yes, I stand here by saying, my proposal is to kick you out of here. Not because we don't love you, but only because it's, again, a space that, that we could acquire. So we've talked, Dr. Nolli talked about options for, for board in the future. So as you can see, we'd be maxing out pretty much our, our school downstairs, room 10, 11, 12, 13, all the way around to 28, and then over on your right side, room 30, is the recreation department. So what are some key timelines, what we're looking at? Well, clearly, we're here very early for you to talk about this because there's a lot of work to do. First of all, it's very difficult finding a Montessori teacher that's not only certified, but then brings that flavor and the background that we're looking for. So that'd be our first and foremost, that we look for a teacher, again, starting, depending on, you know, your approval or not approval as we look forward. Then we develop a communication plan, again, looking at our lottery seats and that communication to that in December. Developed our curriculum framework around the national, state, local, and also the tenants we talked about. And then again, looking at extracurriculars, trying to involve and reach out to our current middle schools for the extracurriculars and then begin to organize those materials. So what are the key points? Again, our program is looking at based on, building on the eight tenants of Montessori. We look at completing a pathway to high school for our Montessori students. We want to continue to create a supportive culture as the platform that's going to, that's going to springboard our seventh and eighth graders to get a education that makes them feel not only supported physically and emotionally, but mentally. We want to provide that leadership in the area in Montessori, continue to be that, that model in the area of practice in Montessori community. And again, former, fore, foremost, just thank all the parents that were involved, particularly those in the, in the committee, the Fryes, the Neltens, the Cosses, the Lutz, McCormick's, the Ruths, Thompsons, Shriver's, and there are many more, but, and again, the teachers. So I know it's pie in the sky. I know we've grown in the past. I think we have a very successful program, but we're coming to you with, again, a vision. And again, this has been all driven by the community and the parents. So it's been an interesting journey as we've gotten to this point, and we look forward to continuing that journey.
Couple of comments I'm just going to make too. I, you know, Bill just characterized it as pie in the sky. I wouldn't put it that way. This is a real proposal that we do want to bring forward. I'd like to have the board vote on it prior to the start of the school year. There's some, some work we have to do with the financials of it, but I, a friend of mine that was a history teacher, we kind of used to joke back and forth about, why do we teach history? It never changes. And he, he had this quote, it was, you need to know and understand the history or you're bound and determined to repeat the mistakes of the past. So for the board's sake, I just want to step back in time a little bit as, as a reminder of how we started the Montessori school and where it came from. And it actually dates back to the board's work on this whole building and the process of selling this building. It was actually for sale and the board, you know, some of these board members were here and made that decision after there were some offers on this building for a lot of money and decided not to sell the building and said, use, you know, take care of it, use it how you think is, is best for our, our students and our families. And I think we came down, actually, in this room for a tornado drill and crawling through the spider webs and sitting down here, and I believe it was John Mack that said, why don't we start a Montessori program? So it does date back, and I think there was a lot of work that went into it to that point. And there was a lot of discussion at the board table and a lot of discussion when we started, how are we going to afford, how can we afford this because we're just diluting the elementary school population and creating another school? So financially, how do we do it? One of the things we said was, we're going to count on non, non-attending resident enrollment to bring some of those parents back. And we said, the first year, we can actually count the numbers. And ever since then, we have, there's really no good, reliable way to count other than if we ask a group of parents to raise their hands and say, if this wasn't here, would I be attending a private or parochial school? But I think we know that, we look at the numbers of some of the, the private Montessori schools, and we know that Wauwatosa resident populations are down significantly in them because they are attending our, our school district. There's a financial reality to this as well as the fact, I mean, the bigger picture for me is we have options for parents and students, and some kids learn better through this method, and it's a choice for parents. And I, I've said it before, over and over, I believe we can offer choice within the public school system, and we've done it successfully at W-STEM, Middle School STEM, and here at the Montessori. As we step out into this, there's a few components of the financial, middle school gets a little bit different with staffing. It's not diluted as much, but we're taking students essentially, we're counting on some of our students staying. We're never going to be able to, again, determine exactly how many and the dollar-for-dollar exchange. So there is some risk and some leap of faith as we go forward on this, but when we staff our middle schools, we staff one FTE for 25.5 students. So we use that, as we've been discussing and going through some of the planning. And then the specials, we would have to pull that out of the middle school's programming as well, and it's not going to be a dollar-for-dollar or FTE-for-FTE exchange with the middle schools in here. And some of the programming, whether or not, it's not going to be able to be offered here, or students would have to travel to the middle schools to support those programs. So there's some, some work we're going to need to sit down with Mr. Mack and work through the financials before we bring back something for, for a vote for the board, but I think the concept is good in place. I, I know the interest is there. I also remember that first year when we, we said, we hope we get, I think it was 30 students, and I was just nervous as applications were coming in, hoping we'd get 15 so we could actually open the doors. And I think we've seen the success and we know the, the interest in this program as well, and it's grown tremendously from that. So there's, there's been tremendous support in the community, there's been support, we've, we have great teachers working with the kids, reputation of a Montessori school is one of my understanding, is, is a very positive reputation amongst even more veteran schools. So things are going well. I think it's an opportunity where we can continue to grow and offer a middle school program, do it in a financially responsible way. And really, I want to be able to work through and try to reduce the amount of risk financially of going in this before we bring it back for, for something, exactly for the board to vote on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anderson, anything to add?
Let's go.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Like I said, it's, I don't know, there's no easy way of, of saying it, it is an investment. And again, like Phil alluded to, I think if you think back to, it's kind of scary going outside that comfort zone, and when we did that originally, look what we have now. And so it's, we can assure you, we can do it again.
All right. Do we have questions for Mr. Anderson, board members? Mrs. Casey?
Mr. Anderson, you guys hope, host open houses to, you know, give information to prospective families. Can you talk a little bit about those this year and in the past and what your applications were this year?
This year, our applications, we were up to, and I want to say, I think we had 84 applications for our element, for our JK openings. So it was quite high. I should say, 84 total applicants for our openings. Forty-eight of those were just for our JK area. So we had four sessions for parents to come in and do tours, and each session had at least 25 prospective family members or individuals in that. So it was well-attended, they love it. And so I always ended the tour by saying, it is a lottery school, you must be attending resident, and I can just say, you know, put in, put in for the lottery. And I wish we could take you all, but, you know, financial realities are that we can service only a finite population. So, so it's a good, it's a good bad, but, you know, we live with it, and it is a system and it's working well, so.
Thanks, and thanks for the report. I was just amazed when you said that the school opened in 2011. I, I cannot believe it. It feels like it's been here much longer, and I do know from the community and parents that it, it is an excellent program, and I believe it is a great enhancement to the educational landscape of Wauwatosa. So thank you.
Any other board question, comments? Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. Thank you, that was a nice presentation. I know the school's been spectacularly successful. One question I had was about specials, art and band and things like that. I know that the school's been trying to follow the Montessori method pretty faithfully. So at, at the upper level, is the inclusion of specials part of the Montessori method, or is that something we're including because that's what we include with our other middle school students? What's the relationship there?
Yeah, what I did is I, I just put that in there right now, just for, just knowing that if we were to include that, there's a cost involved to that in terms of FTE investment from the district. I think we have opportunities to explore what that might look like for us here in Montessori. Does that necessarily have to be part of what we do? I think we can juice and use that time a little bit differently and try to look at that piece, but I wanted to put it in the proposal just as a, so here would be an eventual cost. And I think that's kind of what, you know, Phil and Phil talked about a little bit in terms of some of the costing and looking at those pieces that we have to do yet.
So is that, if I understood it correctly, part of the financials you're looking at? That if, say, if only a couple of students wanted to take a foreign language, how would that fit into the financial picture and what do we offer? Is that what you mean by looking at additional financials?
Yes, so how do we offer those specials and what do they look like? And so it is a piece that we have to kind of iron out.
And I know one thing that middle school, middle school students dearly love is joining clubs and athletics and things like that. And I remember I saw one parent comment saying, would they be able to participate in athletics? So has that part been sorted out?
I think originally, I think when we first started out, we're going to try to partner with Whitman, it's the closest kind of neighbor school where our students could be involved. We already this year had some students in the, what was it, speech? Oh, yeah, forensics, forensics. So I think there's a natural bridge for us to be able to do that. Will we ever get to the point where we can self-sustain? Possibly, but, you know, I think starting out, we'd work with Whitman to kind of do some bridging and do some partnering there.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a great opportunity.
Thanks.
Mr. Meyer?
How do you decide which high school they attend?
Well, we could flip coins, no, just kidding.
Oh, we don't kid about high school choice.
They attend their home district high school.
It comes back to their home, their home address where their, you know, elementary school would be and how they would go. I think that's.
So it would be the current boundary?
Current boundary, correct.
And everyone understands that.
You don't get to make a choice.
The board history has been very staunchly opposed to any exceptions.
Absolutely, that's why we would not offer that exception.
Some strong need that the superintendent recognizes. Okay, just so everybody knows that going in.
It's based on your home district or your residency.
Whatever the rule is, we're going to have to, we're going to probably have to follow it. So let's make sure everybody knows that rule walking in the door.
Thank you, very, good point.
Anything else, Mr. Meyer?
I would just like to thank Lois Weber for being one of the leaders on the board 10 years ago that helped decide to retain this building instead of selling it. Her legacy lives on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Button?
You mentioned that there's quite a number for the lottery to get into Montessori, parent choice, et cetera, parent trying to drive or having a big influence on where they think their children are best able to learn. Have you found in the last two or three years that there are a number of kids that this is not a good fit? And you discover it, either the teachers or you as an administrator, that this isn't working and you've had to have discussions with parents?
We, we have not had any students go back to their homeschool, except for one who, through discussion, we knew there was just more support possible and a different structure where the student would benefit from. But by and large, we try to have those conversations upfront, particularly with our parents as they come around and tour the school. We try to really educate our parents as to what the Montessori philosophy looks like, what our classrooms look like in terms of tours, and what the, what the curriculum looks like, and provide them with that snapshot that we are here to help train our kids to be learners of their own learning. So if you know that that's not, that your, your child needs a little bit more oversight and kind of, kind of regimented to a schedule, then, you know, the school option that they currently are in is probably a really good option for them. The Montessori is just a different option. So we do a really good job in trying to really highlight that point, and so we haven't seen that, that exodus or anything. So it hasn't been a concern.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have just a couple of things. I, I, like Mr. Meyer, have to talk about retention of this building because I'm very proud that several of us up here. of this building, because I'm very proud that several of us up here fought very hard to have this building restored. And it's so wonderful to see it filled with families and kids. It's just amazing. And I'll note that we all started at the same time that Dr. Erdl did. And so it's been a, you know, a united journey, and that's very cool. The other thing is, you know, the way that public education is gonna survive is through choice. And through choice within the organization. And so I think that we have been careful and thoughtful, but we really have provided some great opportunities for our students that keeps people from going somewhere else and looking for something different. And so the grassroots part of this is just my favorite part, you know, the fact that it started with families, that you're all here tonight to keep it going. This is how it works. This is how public education should work, and this is how kids should be supported and welcomed. So obviously, I'm a great supporter of it. I hear a lot about it. I heard somebody at Sendix the other day, there were two people talking behind me when I was waiting to order. So I had to turn around and introduce myself and get in the discussion. One had gotten in and one hadn't. So it was fun. It was fun. But, I mean, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of positive comments and things going on. So with that, is there any community comment? Please feel free to share your thoughts here. All right, Kate.
Good wait time. Could use a wait time.
So my name's Kate Knowlton, and I live at 7006 Milwaukee Avenue. I am a very proud, very staunch, happy, happy supporter of the Montessori school. My daughter will be in sixth grade, right?
Right.
Sixth grade this upcoming year. So she would be in the inaugural class of the seventh and eighth grade. And we would consider private education, unfortunately. And we do also have a student right now at Longfellow, and we love Longfellow. Bonthers are no bonthers. We love Longfellow. But, you know, it, this experience has been unbelievably amazing. The staff and the faculty has been life-changing. In the first week that my daughter was here, and she made it on the waitlist, she didn't come the first year. We waited until her fourth grade year. And in the first week that I, that she came home talking about expository writing versus narrative, you know, as my little fourth grader, I was thrilled beyond belief. And I credit the amazing staff for that. This last year has been unbelievable with the parental support. This is probably the most people I've ever seen at a school board meeting.
At least the most happy people.
Yeah.
The most people who are happy about it.
I'm sorry. Yeah, there's probably, yeah. But so, yeah, I think what we're trying to tell you is that, you know, we've got your back on this if you've got ours. And from the standpoint of this being an amazing innovative opportunity, the chance for Wauwatosa as a public district to really shine, that's super exciting. As we toured other Montessori experiences, most of them are private. The Milwaukee public options are struggling. And I think that is because of the parental involvement. And I think that we're speaking to you loud and clear about how much will stay invested with you if, you know, the district chooses to make this investment. I also, just quickly, because I was at the last school board meeting when they were talking about the university laboratory school, you have some sophisticated analysis going on right now, I know, in the secondary ed options. And talking about how this physical building and how this could be used, and, you know, keeping the money and the people here. And now with that, as this regional potential magnet, you know, I understand they, I believe, are talking about going six to 12. I think it would be a coup of amazing order to say, "Yeah, we're gonna, we're keeping our kids, and maybe we'll send them to you if you're lucky." So, you know, thank you for listening. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your great job. And we're all super happy to be here. So give us what we want.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have one.
Mr. Meyer?
One question, sort of lighthearted. You know, I tried to check your survey results here, but I couldn't get connection. Have you all been able to, is there a Montessori solution to the lunch food problem? Are your scores higher?
You know...
You don't have to answer that. I thought you just said yes.
I probably have.
We can improve.
You can improve, okay.
We can improve. We're always looking to improve.
This is something Ms. Knowlton said that kind of sparked this thought in me. And this relates to Dr. Erdl's vision, you know, creating options and our vision for creating options for families in the district. And I think that's just a really unique opportunity that we can provide our families are these options. And I want people to remember that, you know, she said she had a Longfellow student and a Montessori student. And I remember once at STEM, there was a family, and they had six kids. And we thought, oh, they're gonna send all their kids to the STEM program. The parent's like, "No, no, 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 no. Wait, it's not for each one of my kids." And so I love that we can provide these opportunities, and parents have these choices to make these individual decisions based on their, each child's academic needs. So I also like to say and remind people that if, you know, a parent is picking a Montessori program or a STEM program, it's not going against the traditional model. It just is a model that may work better for their child, because the traditional model works so well, and we've been very successful at that. So it's just kind of a reminder that, you know, we really have a very enhanced and great opportunities here for our families. So thank you all for coming out. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, and you did remind me of one other thing. I wanted to tie this to our perception survey. It was very strong for the district. And I firmly believe if we did not have that strength in our core curriculum and our core delivery of services, you wouldn't be here, because you wouldn't have even known to look here. So it's very important, the work that our current directors and superintendent do, to get us to where we can have a survey taken and come out that positive. And so it does go hand in hand. So that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick financial question for Mr. Mack, please. What's our state aid amount per student, per resident?
Revenue.
Yeah.
It's over $10,000.
So revenue per student from state aid is $10,000, which is far more than your per cost, per student cost, just generally speaking. So we ought to be able to work out the finances.
We have to...
It's more complicated than that. I know that. I know that.
Okay, John, sorry.
All right. I know that. It's a very...
You want to see the home run derby.
It's a very complicated thing. But it's not like out of imagination that it can work out, you know?
Yes. Could you state your name and address, please?
Absolutely. My name is Amy Basil. I'm at 1847 North 70th Street, right down the street from Kate. We're actually neighbors. My daughter will be in third grade this year. My son will be in kindergarten. We actually moved to Wisconsin from Illinois. Our daughter went to private Montessori for three years down in Illinois. When we moved up here, we were in another community. She went to traditional school, had a great year. We were looking at houses, loved Wauwatosa, but the icing on the cake was there was a Montessori school, which is pretty much why we moved here. And I'm actually the ambassador of the school. So I did the tours with Mr. Anderson this year. And I can tell you, the amount of people that came to each tour, we filled this, we filled this boardroom. I mean, the community response, everybody, everybody wants to be here. Obviously, like Mr. Anderson said, we can't, we can't take everybody in. But I do know that the seventh and eighth grade would be remarkable addition to our middle school program here in, here in Wauwatosa. So I don't know. I'm all for it.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Someone from the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. My name is Erin Pandia, and I live at 2237 North 67th Street. Just a really quick comment, that my husband and I have been living in Wauwatosa since 2006. Our daughter, our oldest daughter will be in third grade also here at Montessori. And we have two others coming up, so we're fully involved. But I will say that my husband is a school teacher as well. He teaches in the Shorewood School District, and they have a multi-age program there. And he has been a huge supporter of multi-age programs. And as our daughter was coming up and spent her first year K4 at Washington, he said to me, "We need to apply for Montessori." And I thought, oh, you know, we're gonna be in so many districts. I was a teacher at the time also, and we're gonna be in Shorewood and Wauwatosa and all these places. And he said, "No, no, we need to stick with Montessori. We need to do multi-age." And that is what we did. And I cannot thank him enough for convincing me that this was the place we needed to be. And because of two things in Wauwatosa, the Montessori school and Hoyt Park and Pool, we will never leave. Truthfully, everyone that I meet, they say to me, you know, "What do you think of the Montessori school? How's it going?" And I say, "It is fantastic, fabulous." I have nothing but like positive raves to give about it, because that's truthfully how committed we are and how much we have appreciated this place. So thank you to you all for making it happen. We would love to stay here for as long as possible. If that's through eighth grade, that is absolutely what we will do. And while at one time I had thought maybe we would move to Shorewood to be a part of their multi-age program, there's no way that that would happen at this point. And so I'm so grateful to this community for making this our home. So thank you. And, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. I'm sure we will see you again. And we can move on then to the 2014-15 board meeting dates. Dr. Erdl?
We have the listing of the board meeting dates for 14-15, second and fourth Mondays of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM, held currently in this room.
Currently.
In the future upstairs, maybe. And there's two months that we'll have one meeting, December and April, and that is because of the winter break and the spring break. So that is the listing of the dates for next year.
Okay. All right. Any other community comment on this? Okay. And I will also entertain public comment on any non-agenda items at this time. Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let everyone know, too, if you're watching, that our summer school program at the elementary level is starting our second session. As of tomorrow, we still have some open seats. If you're interested, please stop by one of our elementary schools and sign up. We have room for you. Love to have you.
All right, you're not talking Montessori. You're talking, you've got your summer school handled now.
District-wide summer school, district-wide. So stop by either Lincoln or Eisenhower, and we can get you scheduled, or West or East High School.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into board in-service to discuss middle school for credit and honors, diplomas, and evaluations? And as this is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained at the in-service?
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Galanti?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. Are we up in?
We're here.
We're here. Oh, okay. We can take a five-minute break?